Our prayer this evening will be from Councilmember Toby Gilli and our pledge will be led by a Life Scout, Josh Perkins, to his presence tonight. Mr. Gilli?
Dear God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us, for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you so much for the privilege we have to live in the greatest city in the world, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. As we come together tonight to make decisions for the citizens of this community, give us your guidance and your wisdom and place your hand upon our thoughts and our hearts as we make those decisions. In your son's name we pray, amen.
All right, Scott Perkins?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that was Josh Perkins, who's working on his communications merit badge and is working toward Eagle Scout. And did I say that right? You're a Life Scout now already? Good. And Troop 398, and with him is someone who may be akin to him named Mark Perkins. Is that right? Assistant Scoutmaster? Great, with Troop 398. We appreciate you being here and always welcome all of our visitors, and we see several smiling faces with us tonight, and that's the way we want to try to keep it. So it's nice to have you all here with us. And welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, May 14, 2009. Today is Police Officers Memorial Day. We had a ceremony at 11 o'clock today in the City Hall Rotunda, and I would like to once again help us be mindful and remember those police officers who have given their lives in the line of duty, and those who protect and serve us across our nation, not only here in Murfreesboro, but in our county and in our state and in our nation. So I do appreciate them. And certainly, one of our reminders was the outstanding job that all our responders did during our Good Friday tornado and the aftermath of that. So I want to appreciate and share those comments with the council tonight. You have before your consent agenda, if you've had an opportunity to look through it. Are there any questions as to the consent agenda? If there are no questions, are you ready for a motion?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
All right, you have a motion, second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to annex an area located on the northwestern corner of Halls Hill Pike and Twin Oak Drive, and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
So move, second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to zone an area located on the northwestern corner of Halls Hill Pike and Twin Oak Drive as commercial fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval, second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Section 25 and 1/4-2, 25 and 1/4-22, -24, and -26 dealing with attached and ground signs.
Move for passage, second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Section 25 and 1/4-2, -6, -24, -25, -26 dealing with changeable signs.
Move for passage, second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on April 9, 2009, will now conduct a public hearing to consider a rezoning of 17.81 acres west of Dill Lane from single-family residential 10 RS 10 District to a planned residential development PRD District Eagle Summit Partners applicant, and the notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 26, 2009 issue of a local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. You have before you a request to rezone 17.81 acres located along the western side of Dill Lane just south of Mercury Boulevard from its current RS 10 Zone to PRD Planned Residential District. The property to the north is owned CH and is the location of the new First National Bank. To the east, the property is owned PCD and is the location of the Tractor Supply Company. Also to the east are some multifamily residential complexes. To the south, adjacent to the property is a church, and to the south and west are developed single-family subdivisions. The property is 17.81 acres, and the property owners requesting to zone it PRD Planned Residential District to allow the construction of 14 three-story apartment buildings on the site with a total of 260 dwelling units. The property will also have a maintenance building, a clubhouse with a pool, hot tub, basketball court, sand volleyball court, and a minimum of five barbecue grills. The target demographic for this apartment complex will be Middle Tennessee State University students. The applicant has submitted a pattern book, which is in your package for your review. You may recall last month you did approve a request to allow CUD to provide water service to this property to serve it with adequate fire and water flows. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on Monday, March 16, 2009, at the Hobgood Elementary School, which was well attended by neighbors and interested parties. Planning staff was also in attendance at that meeting. The City Council should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning the 17.81 acres to PCD to allow their multifamily residential units. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this plan. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening, and if you will allow him, he'd like to give you a brief presentation regarding the proposal. If you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, we'd be glad to answer them for you.
My name is Matt Taylor of SCC here in town, and I'm here tonight to present to you a request for rezoning for the reserve at Dill Lane, a student housing site. I'm accompanied by Mr. Hal Marston and Mr. Mike Piper, the developers on the project, as well as Mr. Skip Heber, the landscape architect on the project. First, a brief intro into the project. It is, the property itself is located along the west side of Dill Lane just to the south of Mercury Boulevard, and is just under 18 acres in size. It's currently zoned RS 10 for single-family residential, and we are requesting a PRD zoning to allow for 260 townhouse-style apartment units, all three stories as Ms. Ely stated. That would give us a density of apartments, mainly 14.6 units per acre. However, if you look at the bedrooms, our mixture will be 121 bedrooms, 122 bedrooms, and 24 bedrooms, which will give us a bedroom per acre density, about half of similar type apartment developments in the region. With that, having fewer bedrooms, that will drive our cost per monthly rental unit up, and therefore, we feel like that will limit our market to an upperclassman, graduate student, young professional, making for a much more low-key, calmer development. The site, we will need utilities extended to the site. Water will be provided by CUD, and it'll come from the south along Dill Lane. That'll be a responsibility of the developer to do with this project. Sewers on both the east and the west side of the property is expected to be extended from the west into the property. As well as, electric will be underground and is located along Dill Lane and will be provided by MED. As Ms. Ely stated, most of the uses to the south and to the west are existing single-family residences. To the north is a mixture of multifamily and commercial zoning, as well as the same mixture to the east. The site itself is primarily covered and open, what I'd describe as pasture, with a little bit of scrub toward the back and a existing fence line and tree line that cuts the property in half. Toward the front of the property are a couple of existing houses and a barn. All of those structures are proposed to be removed. Here, I've shown a picture of Dill Lane as it currently exists, looking north toward Mercury Boulevard. The houses to be removed. This is some of the, this is the tree line that cuts the property in half with the, some of the pasture and cover there. And more of the same here's looking to the north from Atlas Street. One of the first things we noticed about this property was a good stand of mature hardwoods and a mixture of evergreens and scrub around the perimeter of the property. We identified early on in the process that we wanted to, wanted these trees to remain. One, they're a nice asset to the development itself, but it also helps buffer our development from the surrounding residents. Here's a picture of our perimeter at the northeast corner of the site. You can see some nice tall pine trees. Here's looking along the north property line. These were taken in January, so you can see that these are hardwoods, deciduous, with some evergreens and undergrowth. We'll clean up some of that undergrowth, make it a little bit more neater, but we want to keep the hardwoods as well as the evergreens. Again, this is the north side of the property. Here's looking back toward the west where we abut several existing residences. You can tell that you can barely make out the outline of an existing house. This was taken in the dead of winter in January, as a matter of fact, and it's serving as a good buffer then, so in the summer it's only going to get better. Here's looking to the south. It's one of more thin parts of our perimeter. Here, we'll be supplementing with new vegetation, much more heavily than we will be on the other portions of the site, further buffer our neighbors. The design of the site itself, we feel like we started good with a nice landscape, median entryway, signage, and pedestrian scale lighting up front with a nicely designed clubhouse and a gated entry. As you move into the site, you find large abundance, almost 50 percent open space, amenities spread throughout, nicely landscaped and designed architecturally built. All of our buildings are three-story, and with that, along with the perimeter trees, as we mentioned earlier, we knew that we needed to be sensitive to our surrounding homeowners. So in the southwest corner of the site, where we abut the homes directly, we've moved all of our buildings at least 50 feet off the property line there. That accomplishes a couple of things. It just gets us away from them. Distance is the best buffer, as well as it allows us to minimize those trees that are there as little as possible. There is a maintenance building down in this corner as well, but that's not a big noise generator. It's mainly for storage of lawn maintenance equipment, things like that. In addition, we've moved our parking areas on the opposite side of the buildings from the homes here. Those tend to be a large noise generator in these developments as well, and we just want to get those away from the homeowners as well. The development will have all underground utilities, as well as we'll be meeting the GDO lighting standards in these areas. As well, we've agreed to put up a six-foot PVC fence at our northeastern corner along the backs of those existing residences, as well as along the side to the, about the back corner of the southernmost house in that corner. In addition, in the north, or the southwest corner, there's a lot there that we've agreed to put up or replace, a missing chain-link fence for the homeowner there as well, Mr. Dooley, I believe. Our access points on the site, our primary and only open access point will come off of Dill Lane. We will be installing a right turn lane there, as well as we'll be installing curb and gutter and sidewalk stretching from the southern boundary of our property all the way back to Mercury Boulevard. With the exception of, we will not be installing sidewalk on the two existing residences. Felt like at the time that those redeveloped, that would be a more appropriate time for that sidewalk to be installed, so it's not tore up. We will also be constructing a turnaround cul-de-sac at the end of Atlas Street on our western side of our property. That is for emergency vehicles, trash services, instead of them having to back all the way down to Atlas. It will not be open to the public. There'll be a gated entry there, a crash gate, so that emergency vehicles can get in, but the public cannot access that. Landscaping, as you saw earlier, that was one of our first things that we looked at on our perimeter, and we've got a landscape architect on board who's done a nice job making sure all of our buildings are nicely landscaped, have a nice sustainable welcome home features there. Some of our pallets, we'll have some maples, some magnolias, some red buds, habilias, and rose bushes. Those are a small sample of our pallet. More complete sample is found in your booklet. The buildings themselves are all three-story. They're a mixture of brick and hardy siding. They've all got nicely designed entryways, but focal feature there, easily found nice bases, bearing roof line, working that front plane in and out, so you're not looking at one solid wall there. This is the front elevation of the one- and two-bedroom units, the rear of those same units, the front of the four-bedroom units. They're pretty much the same as the one-and-twos, except for here, you'll see two front doors at each opening instead of only one. And then the rear of the four bedrooms. Our amenities, we believe, started as soon as you come into the site with the signage, the landscape medians, and the clubhouse, as well as the gated entry. The rest of the amenities are spread across the site. They're mainly made up of unstructured open space, which can be used for a multitude of things, everything from just leisure time to reading a book, to frisbee, or touch football. Some of our more structured amenities will include a basketball court, as well as a sandpit volleyball, and scattered throughout the site will be grills with benches for nice, for some nice gathering spots. Our biggest structured amenity will be the clubhouse, to be complete with a pool and spa, and the mailbox kiosk will also be located there. Internally, there will be a theater, as well as a coffee bar, a pool table, along with tanning beds, a wee room, and a full-service model. Again, I'm Matt Taylor, and I'm accompanied by the developer and landscape architect. If any of us, if you have any questions, all of us will be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mayor, I had just a couple of questions I want to ask Mr. Taylor if I could. Matt, at the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, there were two main issues that came about. One being the two individuals who had requests regarding fencing, and you've addressed those. The other two speakers, I believe, had concerns regarding drainage in the creek. Can you go ahead and address what was discussed, the Planning Commission, for us here?
Sure. The, down at, around Mercury Boulevard, that is the headwaters of Sinking Creek, and we know that that area is a sensitive issue. Our site has been designed with a detention, a lot of space for a detention pond, as well as a lot of open space, so we're generating less runoff just by the open space that we have, and our ponds will meet all the new stormwater regulations that the city has recently put into effect, water quality, as well as some stream bank and pre versus post, so we don't harm any of our downstream neighbors at all.
And through site approval, there'll be drainage plans to come back on a regular basis between the staff and the Planning Commission as well to monitor that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's a good question, Mr. Gilli. Can you show us on your chart there the drainage or what, where?
I'll just come up to the-
Yeah, if you would. Might take the microphone there.
I'll just make sure I talk loud. Right now, the drainage pattern is primarily, there's a couple of ponds located up here in these existing subdivisions. They all drain down and come across. Matter of fact, there's a pond right here on the back of these locks. It comes across, runs across our site, something like this, and then comes down here. There's a couple of spots that stay wet just about all year round on this parcel, and it comes down here, comes down the back of these locks, behind the back of these apartment units, and then turns and crosses down there underneath Mercury Boulevard, and it goes on down through Main Street. You see a nice channel in front of some little nice homes down Main Street there as well. All of it, all of it goes that way. Our pond is planned down in this lower corner, right to the north of where we planted the whole set.
And that will be to slow the movement of the water, to retain it for a period of time?
Yes, sir. It'll hold it back for water quality rigs, they have to hold it back for at least 24 hours along the stream bank. Those are more frequent storms, as well as, if you think we can intercept now, we won't go to put any more, we won't go to put it over there any faster than it's going right now.
And a follow-up to that, and this may be a question more better addressed by Mr. Adalot, but under our design standards, as far as drainage is concerned, your project, anyone's project, cannot cause any more drainage issues to adjoining properties that were there prior to it, and instead, to the contrary, you should do things to try to help alleviate any situations. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning of 17.81 acres west of Dill Lane, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
My name is Corinne Zorn, and I live at 407 Venus Place, and I still don't have sufficient answers on the water problem because of that sinking creek, and they never have to show it on there. It's right involved in there, and I don't see why they don't have to show that. And it's never cleaned out, and you're going to have all kinds of trees and everything falling in there, and how are you going to keep all that from just blocking it in?
Would you show us where your home is?
It's 407 Venus Place.
But I don't think we have the street numbers. If you could just show us the location. It might be, if it's hard to do, I won't make you do that. We won't have a test.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
And see, there are several, that creek runs right behind us, and I don't know what to do. I mean, I have asked for it to be studied. I have asked that it be cleaned out. It's not that people dump things back there. It is just that there's just trees falling, and there's branches, and then when you have a lot of rainfall, it's just going to bottleneck that whole thing, and anytime you change the lay of the land, which those apartments will, you're going to have problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezone an area west of Dill Lane to a planned residential development PRD District. Mr. McFarland?
Yes, is Ms. Ray, Ms. Ray?
He's here.
We looked, I know Ms. Zorn had contacted us by email, and I know we had talked, but I know Mr. Lyons was working on that. Did we come up with a total resolution on what was going on behind Venus? I know that we had an easement back there that needed some-
Well, I stand before you, but I think Mr. Griffith has been looking into that.
Okay.
And I'm certain he can maybe shed some light on his current status of it.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Yes, Mr. McFarland, we have looked at that issue. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, it's really the headwaters of Sinking Creek. It's traditionally, we've researched it all the way back to pre-1960s. It's traditionally been a low area in there, may have possibly even been used as a, as a borrow pit. The Tennessee Department of Transportation built a culvert with the rework of Mercury Boulevard in 1990 that, they didn't redirect some water in there, but it filled up some sinkholes that were on the property and just, I guess, kind of streamlined the storm drainage design through that area. To answer your question, it's really just a, we don't actually have a stormwater easement on there. I think there's a, there is a sanitary sewer line that goes through. I think there's an easement involved with it that's really not associated with this problem. It's just, has traditionally been a low area that holds water, and the way the system is designed, and the way T.DOT designed the system was to, for the water to drain in onto this property, to fill up, and once it got it to a breakover point, then it would continue on to Sinking Creek. As Ms. Zorn stated, this actually is, this area hasn't been mapped. It really isn't, doesn't show up on the FEMA classification of 100-year floodplain or what have you until it actually, to it crosses Middle Tennessee Boulevard. So it's still some, it's really just the early stages of a, of a stream. It's just really just a low, wet area that Mr. Whitaker, I know, has sent some notices in the past for, for cutting grass. Obviously, it's kind of a hard area to, for the homeowner, or for the landowner to cut their grass, but we do endeavor to keep the maintenance up in this way.
So you're saying the property owner has responsibilities for trees that fall, limbs that fall, and on their particular property? Is that what you're saying?
They do.
And keep it mowed if it's less than a certain amount of acreage?
Exactly. There's no, there's no sort of public drainage easement at, at least that I could, could find record of on the, on the property, and it would be the homeowners, or the landowners' responsibility for upkeep of it.
Mr. Gilli?
With that being the case, can we require, as part of this approval process, that that area that Ms. Zorn's referring to be cleaned out by the developer?
It would be a, be a private land issue. I don't know if we could reach some sort of an agreement with-
This is a PUD that they're requesting, which gives us a little more leeway, I think, in requirements, so could, and maybe that's a question Joseph might need to answer for us, but is that appropriate to make that a part of the approval process, Joseph?
Mr. Gilli, members of the council, this is one of those awkward situations where the drainage problem is being manifested on somebody else's property. What you're seeing is the property to the north. Our application area would be here. The inadequacies in the stream channel are in this area right here. So we would be asking this property owner to enter somebody else's property who may or may not be willing to allow it. And the reports seem to be that it's an accumulation of debris with the tree limbs that's part of a natural process. I think what's, of course, we have a, maybe some reason to contact this property owner and put them on notice a little bit better, that they've got a problem that they do need to address, and the problem is being manifested by the drainage situation. We've actually had some problems with that property owner in the past about some fill activities that were ongoing, so we're familiar with them and how to get in touch with them.
So perhaps then with this particular project, Ms. Zorn's issue may be twofold in the solution. One is the detention and retention areas that Matt spoke of are going to help keep the water on their site longer to ease up drainage issues on the other property. But the second part of that may be that the other development that's already existing, the area that's already existing there is to make sure that if they've got debris that's on their property that's causing drainage issues for adjoining property, do we not have the appropriate remedies to make them clean that out?
And I'm going to add a caveat to that, Mr. Gilli, that this is one of those awkward things about wet areas. When we start putting or making changes in wet areas, there are wetland issues that we have to be careful about. There's, we all hear about wetlands and what have you. We do know that that is a, a stream channel and a wet area, but I don't know whether it's classified as such or not. I'm confident that this development will not be aggravating the existing problem, but I think that through our codes issue, we may be able to help the situation that Ms. Zorn is reporting.
Okay, I would like us to work on that then, especially if it goes to another property that's not even subject to this codes issue we need to look at. We need to look at that then.
Mr. Adalot, is this site that's in question on Ms. Zorn's property or on the RM16?
On the RM16. On the RM16.
The problem is, actually, I believe, own, across the property line and own this property is my best recollection of the situation.
Okay. I held up Mr. Washington's head.
Oh, sorry.
Comment, so I'm...
The, I believe the answer to your question is the RM16 site had been filled to some degree over a number of years without permits and has added to, compounded the problem. The property owner had been contacted on a number of occasions. We never could catch him filling it, but that site has worsened the problem in the And it's a large track of ground that there was no controlled fill when the fill material was put in, so it virtually would have to be excavated back to its original elevation and start all over again before we could do anything with it. But in the meantime, it creates a problem in the area.
Mr. Washington?
My only concern really is, and Joseph knows this, is this developer has one way in and one way out. And so when you, am I not correct?
Actually, there's going to be one primary entrance, but they're creating a secondary entrance by extending an atlas into it. And I will report that our fire department, particularly Mr. Ken Honeycutt, our fire marshal, was very pleased to see that that was going to be created, even though it was going to be gated, and the routine access for the residents was not going to be available. But for emergency access, it would be available to him and to others, and he felt that was a very big plus to this development.
Well, I know that work with a utility company like I do, that one way in, one way out is not good. And you know what I'm talking about, and we have to have access to get it out whenever we can. So as long as that's acceptable, then I'm fine.
Other questions or comments? Any other questions?
Move for approval on first reading.
And Mayor, I'll second that, but as part of that, I do want to, again, illustrate to Mr. Adalot that the adjoining landowner, that may be contributing to the problem that we have. We need to stay on them. I realize, how long of a project do we look, do we think this one's going to be as far as field ass concerned? The one that we're looking at tonight? Matt?
What?
So we've got a year's worth of time to try to get something started working on fixing the issue on the adjoining property, but I'll second...
I'll second Mr. Young's motion.
All right, you have a motion. Second, are there any questions on the motion? If not, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you all. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on April 9, 2009, will now conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to Appendix A zoning, section 2479, 1315, 1819, 2024, 25, Chart 1, and Chart 2 pertaining to definitions and charts, updating terms, reorganizing, and renumbering existing texts and other amendments. The planning staff, city of Murfreesboro, is applicant, and the notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 26, 2009, issue of the local newspaper.
Good evening.
Shannon, how are you? Nice to have you, Ms. Logan.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Bragg and councilman. The city zoning ordinance was adopted in 1984, and since that time, there have been a number of changes that have been made over the years. One of the changes that is separate from our zoning ordinance, but that affects our zoning ordinance, was the adoption of the major thoroughfare plan. In addition, there was a comprehensive amendment made to our floodplain regulations and the creation of our new overlay zones, such as our gateway districts. Of course, we've also had changes made to our state regulations. Staff has prepared a number of amendments to our zoning ordinance to update the zoning ordinance. Some of the amendments are such things as just pagingation and correcting capitalization and making sure that references are consistent throughout, while some of the other amendments were actually done to update certain definitions throughout the zoning ordinance. The city's legal department has reviewed the proposed amendments that are before you tonight, and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the amendment at their April 1, 2009 meeting. Each one of the amendments is specifically identified before you tonight in your staff report, and myself and Mr. Adalot are both available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Logan before we open the public hearing? If there are none, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against these amendments to Appendix A of our zoning regulations, please step forward to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, sections 2479, 1315, 1819, 2024, 25, Chart 1, and Chart 2 pertaining to definitions and charts, updating terms, reorganizing, and renumbering existing texts and other amendments.
So moved.
Second. All right, you have a motion. Second, Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. At this time, we'll have a report from the City Treasurer, Personnel Director, with regards to executive search firms, and a city manager search.
Good evening, the mayor and members of the city council. This week in your packet of information, I sent you the responses from the survey companies as to the questions that we needed with other cities that they had worked with with past placement. Also, I provided you with the references by contact in each one of those cities, and tonight I come to you and I ask you for your guidance and how you want to proceed.
All right. In reading through, I noticed my good friend, Mayor Beahan, up in Oak Ridge, gave us quite a recommendation with one of the search firms, and I appreciate him, and I assume that you got good responses from all of the individuals that you contacted.
I did.
I appreciate that. Council members, have any questions or anything else that you would like for our Personnel Director to get for us in regards to this executive search?
Mayor, I'd kind of like to bring up a related topic or talk about a couple of things that have been on my mind. I still think back to the executive search that we did on the Lineball Library Board, where I sit as a council representative to replace the previous director, and we went through seven, eight-month process. We expended a lot of money, and we hired an outstanding director, 24 years' experience, capable in all aspects of the job, but it happened to be the number two person at the Lineball. And I guess I just, I've been wondering what other thoughts and comments the council might have on that subject.
Mayor, over the last few weeks, I've been doing quite a bit of thinking in light of the experience we have with the Good Friday tornadoes specifically, and I was one of us who was a big proponent of looking at this search committee from the very beginning, and realized that you don't ask for tragedies to test you, but as I said a few weeks ago when we were thanking the staff and employees for all the hard work and efficiency that was put into the aftermath of the tornadoes, I said that tragedy begets heroes, and from heroes become leaders. And what we saw in action at that time was, I think, what we all need as our next city manager, from respect that come from the staff and employees of the city, respect for the city, and a general know-how, and heartfelt love for the city and Rob Lyons. And I am ready to back away from the idea of doing the search and hire Mr. Lyons tonight.
Mayor, I've gone, I was much like Councilman Gilli, and, you know, have been torn about doing a national search, and at the same time, you know, feel like that we have a very capable person to take, you know, to take us and add on where Mr. Haley has gotten us. You know, and I understand in the position that Mr. Haley is in, that you don't make everyone happy, and I don't think our next city manager will make everyone happy either. And just as you have a city manager and you have a deputy city manager, I'm sure with the time that Mr. Lyons has been here, that he probably didn't agree with every decision that Mr. Haley made, but Mr. Haley's his boss. And just like the next city manager is going to have a deputy city manager that doesn't agree with them all the time, it's their role to support that person. That's what a team does, and I think that's where Mr. Lyons has capably done for the time that he's been here. And, you know, you go back and forth of doing a national search, and we come around and we do a circle, and we end up right where we were in the first place, and that's with the person that, and it's not just on the Good Friday tornadoes. I think that is a very good example of how Mr. Lyons carried himself during tragedy and pulled the staff together and, you know, executed. But I think it's also, for me, what you see on a day-to-day basis on dealing with emails that he, for example, dealt with Ms. Zorn over the last two or three weeks, and making sure that the staff follows through and does what they're supposed to. So, you know, I'm like Mr. Gilli, that I've done sort of a 180, and I think that the person that we need is got a love in their heart from Murfreesboro is already here. So...
Well, I haven't done a 180, I can tell you that, but Rob knows that, I totally support Rob Lyons, and Rob's done a wonderful job. I was one of the ones that applied for the same job, Mr. Haley, 11 years ago, and I've been very impressed with Rob. Mr. Haley picked the right person, not picking me, anyway. But he picked...
You're not supposed to say that, Mr. Washington.
You know, he picked the right person. Rob's pretty sharp, and he had, he's done a great job. He's doing some emails and informing us of some things that's kind of different, you know, and, you know, and probably maybe doing too much, really, but it's his job to lose. I've always said that, and he won't, because I'm going to support him 100 percent. He's been a friend. We went to Bible study together for a while, and I got to know him pretty well. And he's an excellent, excellent candidate. He's going to do the right thing. He's a family man. He's vested here. You know, the one thing you got to watch when you start employing someone somewhere else, are they going to be vested in Murfreesboro? Are they going, are they going to really be vested in Murfreesboro? And he has shown me that he's real vested. So I never had any doubt in my mind that he would not be the next city manager, and I'm going to support him, and what of the rest of you all do, that's on you, but he's
Well, if there are no other comments, I would move that effective, I guess, August, when Mr. Haley retires, that we, August 3, that we hire Mr. Lyons as Mr. Haley's replacement.
Second. All right, you have a motion. Second, any other comments, questions? If there are none, Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
I think we've made a very good decision for our city, and I certainly congratulate Mr. Lyons.
Mayor, I'd also like just to say to Ms. Mahon, thank you for the information that you gave us.
I'm going to say, may I have your permission to contact the companies and thank them and let them know that we did go ahead and place Mr. Lyons into this position? And it's ironic, one of the companies contacted me back just to call me and see how things were going and touch base, and when he found out that we had someone had been here with us 12 years and the job he had done, he said, you know, I would recommend that you put him in that position and spend your money on filling his assistant. So, thank you, and I will contact them.
And I, Ed, I'm sure all the councils, thank you for the very professional job you've put together in trying to help us through this process. Thank you.
You know, Mayor, before we tell her to contact them, we haven't heard Mr. Lyons say he's accepted our offer yet.
And are you going to have an agent, Mr. Lyons?
No, sir. 1996, when I first applied to work here as the Assistant City Manager, I was looking for an assistant position in a medium-sized city that was progressive, that was rapidly growing, and had a university in it, and I found that and much more. What I found in Murfreesboro is a home. What I found have been lifelong friends. What I have found has been a staff that is second to none. I found a city council that has been a joy to work with, and I absolutely look forward to the opportunity to serve as your next city manager. I certainly can't stand here before you without giving such a great debt of gratitude to Mr. Haley and the service that he has provided to this community, the leadership he has provided to our organization. He will be missed. There are big shoes to fill, and I certainly look forward to the opportunity to be part of an amazing team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Well, certainly, Mr. Haley's most important job, I think, as any leader's job, is to prepare the person who's going to take their place, and he's done an excellent job, I think, working with you, Rob, and working with our city staff, as any number of people will attest to. So, Mr. Haley, I want to thank you for that ability that you have done over the years also, preparing someone to take your place. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
Let me say something to Mr. Haley. This man right here, regardless of what anybody says, has worked with me tirelessly for all kinds of issues and been over backwards, you know, he knows, you know, we meant a lot, and I have a total appreciation for his service, and I hope the community understands that we can't fix everything, we can't do everything, but if Rob responds in any way like Mr. Haley has to me for the last 10 years, he'll be outstanding above whatever you can think of, because we've tackled some real difficult issues, and he has never, never backed up. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We can now close the Love End. I'm just very pleased that our council members didn't do a 360, that somebody was did a 180, but that's good. So my congratulations to all, and certainly I think this is a momentous day, a very wonderful vision of tomorrow with your leadership. vision of tomorrow with your leadership, Rob, and certainly Mr. Haley has gotten us to this point, and as a council, we appreciate all the efforts of all our staff, all our department heads, and our folks who make things work in this city and provide our taxpayers and business owners and residents such great service. Thank you. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider a PRD amendment along Riverbend Drive, an annexation zoning PCD along Veterans Parkway, Franklin Road, and a PRD amendment along Fortress Boulevard. You have a copy attached. Welcome, Mr. Haley.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on May 6th of 2009, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters, all of which will need to be scheduled for public hearings. The first is a zone request for a PRD amendment for approximately 4.95 acres located along Riverbend Drive. The second is an annexation request for approximately 4.29 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road. The third is a zone request for the same property minus the right-of-way for approximately 2.92 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road. And then the fourth is a zone request for a PRD amendment of approximately 183.33 acres along Fortress Boulevard. And although that's a lot of acreage, really, it involves only a small part of it, and that would be the signage for the development entrance, and that's really all that that would involve. So, we need to schedule those for public hearings.
All right, Mr. Ives?
Ms. McGannon had suggested that we have these public hearings on June 11th.
All right, June 11th.
Mr. Haley and I were just discussing when the TML conference...
That's the 12th. I believe they do have meetings that day.
On the 11th.
I think it's, I think that Friday is the meetings, early Friday morning, yes.
The 18th will work, June 18th.
All right, the 18th. Yes.
Mayor, I move to set a public hearing June 18th.
Second.
All right, June the 18th. Now, any questions? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineers to a contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phases 3A and B, and a survey and design service for a Leaf Avenue drainage project. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council. At the caution of extending the Love Fest, there's, I would like to add that there was, there's been a lot said as far as our response, and we surely, we certainly appreciate everyone's appreciation of the, our response to the tornado and the hours that were put in and the efforts that were made. I can tell you without a doubt that that was 100 percent due to the leadership of Mr. Lyons. We saw, everyone saw in his eyes the determination to get back out and get the city on its feet, and I, for one, as a department manager, was very grateful for that and very grateful for the strength that he showed us. Now, back to business. We do have a contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phases 3A and 3B. Thirteen bids were received on January 15th of this year for the construction of Veterans Parkway, that's formerly known as the Southwest Loop, Phases 3A and B, which will extend, those phases will extend from Highway 99 to just north of Overall Creek. This is the first two, the first two phases of a three-phase project which will extend from New Salem Highway all the way to Franklin Road. I've included a site map for your use to get you acquainted with the area. We note that we are currently acquiring right-of-way, which is previously approved by council for Phase 3C, which is the remaining leg of that section. We expect to be ready to advertise and bid that section later this summer. The low bid, in the amount of $7,284,794.88, was submitted by Highways Incorporated of Cookeville, Tennessee. Highways Incorporated has completed numerous large-scale projects for the Tennessee Department of Transportation, as well as large private development contracts. Staff and our consultant, Wiser Company, have reviewed their qualifications and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Wiser Company has provided a tabulation of the bids, which I've included in your package, and also a recommendation of award, which is also attached. We recommend award of this contract to Highways Incorporated, subject to the review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney with funding from the TML loan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Mr. Haley?
Mayor and council would want to make sure the council will remember, the staff has worked with the developers of Merrimott Subdivision to secure the right-of-way, the easements at no cost to the city for that portion of Phase 3A and B, which goes through their property, as well as negotiated a schedule for repayment of a little over $1.6 million of the bid price back to the city over a time, within a timeframe that would have the city reimbursed to coincide with our debt service payments on the project. We will be bringing those agreements back to you for your final approval.
Does Phase 3B terminate at a road, or will it...
It terminates at Overall Creek.
It'll, okay. So, it'll be a one-way...
It'll be a dead-end road unless 3C is constructed. Plans being finalized for that phase and will be coming forward sometime probably in the next six months.
We divided those into two separate projects, strictly, mostly for a, for time, in order to be able to run those as concurrent as we could. This project actually contains two bridges, which is the reason we actually have the low bidder is a bridge contractor. We expect the next phase, which is mostly a roadway, to be a road and drainage contractor. One other thing I might add, our engineer's estimate for this, for this project, early on, for this section, was a little over $10 million. So, we got substantial savings due to the, and obviously you see the number of bidders that we had on the interest in this.
Do we have a sewer project anticipated in that particular area down along either New Salem or the Rucker or, and the Greenway also, long-term?
The Overall Creek sewer line runs in the area and will be extended by the development of Merrimott as a part of that development. To the north, your sewer comes down 96, a portion of the way, I can't remember the name of the church, but there's a church scheduled to be built at the intersection of what's now called Beasley Road 96 and Veterans Parkway. So, a sewer will be available throughout the area.
The Assembly of God, I believe.
Or can the extended, this development takes place.
I believe that, isn't that the Assembly of God?
The sewer's on the other side of the road, and we brought up, we looked at that planning commissioner tonight.
By the way, that church was very open and accepting to allow us, our city staff, to have several staff meetings at that location, so I do want to be mindful of thanking them publicly for allowing us to use their sanctuary.
And that church has also been very cooperative in terms of right-of-way as a function of their development plans for the upper part there for 3C, so we appreciate them.
All right, you have these bids before you and this contract. What are your wishes as to the city engineer's recommendation of this award of this contract?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second. Are there any questions? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Second item I have for you tonight is survey and design services for Leaf Avenue Drainage Project. This area has long been a drainage concern for the city due to the flatness of the topography, existing fence lines, mature trees. Many of the homeowners have, yards have drained poorly and often stand in water. While attempts have been made to address the problems with maintenance crews, the condition does continue to worsen. City staff has visited the area on several occasions and has really only been able to provide recommendations, which would offer modest improvements through our existing maintenance program. Therefore, staff has requested and received a proposal for surveying engineering services from SEC Incorporated, a firm here in Murfreesboro, to provide a comprehensive drainage study of the area and to recommend improvements to the system. We know the study begins with a neighborhood meeting, which we are currently trying to set up for a week from Monday or Tuesday at a local church in the neighborhood. This will allow our consultant to meet with the affected property owners so we can better identify the problem areas. Our consultant will then be able to use this information, along with a topographic survey of the area, to begin developing possible improvements to the drainage system. SEC will also have information that they have gained previously from a drainage study of a larger area, which included this, this section, back, they did for the city back in 1999. SEC will then be able to develop construction plans, along with an opinion of construction costs for a more effective drainage system. At that time, once we are able to get the results of the study, we recommend bringing those back to council with the estimated construction cost. We recommend approval of this study, subject to review and approval by the city attorney with funding from the general fund. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Griffith, I know several of us have walked the area out there here recently with the neighbors, and what my question is, what do we, and I live in an older subdivision that we basically use ditches for drainage, what do we do when we see we have culverts or, you know, under our driveways that have either silted over or have even in some instances crushed? Is there anything that we tell residents about that?
Well, certainly, as part of our, any culverts, any driveway culvert or any culverts really in any sort of drainage system, if that's reported to the street department, they will work with the homeowners first to clean them out. We've got two jet-vac trucks, which will actually can flush those culverts out if it's just a siltation problem. If it's something that the culvert's actually been crushed, we can work with the homeowner to get those replaced. We've looked, and that is part of the problem in this area, and we've certainly looked at that, but that was some of the Band-Aid solutions that I was alluding to, that we've done out there, that really hasn't gotten to the, I guess, to the root of the problem, but that'll be certainly be, that's something I ask for SEC to look at specifically, with driveway culverts, any restrictions, and that's something we can address as part of the study.
Well, I think Mr. Adelot brought up a good point when I talked with him, that we have to be careful, not only what we fix in that area, but what that does to us down, you know, downstream on the water that we send out now.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I think that's the one thing that we've, we're talking with the residents that, and I understand this is a long, a long-serving issue that we've had in that area, but that we're, you know, working towards. I would just ask if you'd let us know when that meeting is, so if we, we maybe would want to attend that.
Whenever I finalize the location, the time, I'll certainly get that to council.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any other questions on this recommendation?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second, to approve this recommendation. Any questions? Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. This time, we will consider any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we have one tonight. It's an ownership change of a market at 3208 Memorial Boulevard, and they have met all of our requirements.
All right, they meet all our requirements. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we acknowledge receipt of the city manager's estimate of expenditures charter, and a proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year 2009-2010. Mr. Haley.
Mr. Shoto, if you would pass out to the mayor and council. Mayor and council members, we are happy to provide with you tonight the proposed tentative budget for fiscal year 2009-2010, and we are happy to be able to bring you for the 15th year in a row, a budget that is balanced that you will receive, although you may change it as you wish, but at this point, it's balanced without a tax increase. You will note that there are a number of areas where we have addressed the needs of the city, we believe sufficiently, to provide services that you would wish and require of the city to be able to provide to the public. One of the things that I would point out to you in the letter, in the cover letter, you will, it's pointed out that the General Assembly, Council General Assembly is still in session. It's unsure as to when they will adjourn this year, but as you're aware, usually the last thing they do is adopt their budget for the fiscal, for the coming year. And as such, the state shared revenues that we have in the budget are the best estimates we have at this time. If there are changes made that impact revenue positively or negatively, we will not know that until the General Assembly has adopted its budget. But again, we're, Mr. Lyons and I are thankful that we've got such wonderful staff, department heads, all the way through, that have helped us put this together. And as you have now provided me with the dates I think that you have available, we will put together a calendar of meetings to start the review process just as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. As long as I've been mayor, and certainly as long as our other council members have been mayor, we have always looked forward to receiving this in a timely manner, and once again, you've done that, Mr. Haley, and I know there probably no tears in your eyes that this will be the last budget that you present to this council. Mr. Lyons probably may have some tears knowing that he's got some budgets to present in the future. I noticed that we do have a summary page in the beginning of our budget document that you have given to us, and we'll have an opportunity to look through that, and certainly we'd like to ask all our residents, taxpayers, and those who have an interest in city services to contact us as we go through this budget process and bring anything to our attention that they feel important, that we should study or look at. Just in reading briefly, I noticed that almost all of our departments will have a little smaller budget than they have last year. Certainly you brought up the fact that you don't propose a tax increase, and you have given us a balanced budget all the time that you have been city manager, but with no tax increase, obviously the monies have to come from somewhere, and we'll be looking to the state to find out what they are planning on sharing with us, and that will have an impact and effect on our general fund. There may be some other comments from the council members, but I for one want to again thank you especially for the time that I've been mayor, for the methods and ways that you have presented the budget to us, how open and transparent it has been, and certainly it is, I think it's, the way you have presented it and the work you and your staff have done, it made it very easy for us as a council to understand it and share it with the public, and I want to thank you for that. Any questions or comments now that you have the documents before you?
Well, Mr. Haley's done a wonderful job with budgets. I just had to do my budget today, Mr. Haley, before my board at Middleton's Electric. Ours was down at my district 52 percent. So I think that the public needs to understand that these are different times. These are different times, and it's difficult when you have to provide services that you have to provide, and the cost of operating continues to go up, and your revenues continue to go backwards. So these are difficult times, and I've dealt with it just like you have, but not in your perspective because you've got a lot to consider, more than me. But these are, these are, these are different times, and the public needs to understand that. And for Mr. Haley to bring us a budget with no tax increase, and, you know, there's other states, it's talking about furloughs and layoffs and all that kind of good stuff, and we're not there yet, but these are different times.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to at this time introduce to you Jennifer Ward. Jennifer, if you would stand. Jennifer has been with us for a few weeks now and will be with the city for a short period of time. She's on loans, working very diligently, and I saw last week a document that she put together while she was interning at the Tennessee Municipal League Office in Nashville, and we will be sharing that report with you that shows, it will show you the total compiled from the various areas where the state of Tennessee has reduced the shared revenues with the cities across the state. And I think you'll find the figures annually and cumulatively to be an eye-opener for local government to have to make up, as we all have, the reduction in revenues that we used to receive from the state. But we're glad to have Jennifer here as an intern. She's doing a great job. She's in the office next to the mayor's office as you come in the administrative section, so if you have an opportunity to stop by and chat with her, I think you'll find her experience is very interesting and would welcome you to come by and say hello.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Jennifer, we do welcome you and we appreciate what you're doing, and we certainly think and know that local government is interesting. It's a very personal business, and there are lots of things that go on in cities that make a difference for our residents, for our business owners, and for our visitors. And as much as you can learn and share in your time with us will certainly benefit you in the long term across your careers. So we welcome you and we're glad you're here.
And mayor, I think Mr. Lyons can say she is hands-on, because I know last week she helped us with a menace cat to our community and the neighborhoods. So she was, she was working on that with the homeowner and the staff last week, so she is, is literally hands-on.
Good. All right, this time you have a list of bills that need to be paid. Are there any questions on the statements to be considered for payment? Now is a great time to ask those. If not, entertain a motion that we pay the bills.
Move to pay the bills. Second.
All right, motion second to pay the bills. Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
I have before you my recommendations tonight for several commission and board appointments to our airport commission. I would like to reappoint Payne Hardison, George Huddleston Jr., John Polk, and Gail Zlatkin. I'd like to appoint Steve Lane to replace Steve Fitzhugh, and like to appoint Steve Waldron to replace David Swindler. Certainly want to thank Mr. Fitzhugh and Mr. Swindler for their work with the commission over the previous years. As to historic zoning, I'd like to appoint Paul Cross replacing Robert Sanders, and again, would like to thank Mr. Sanders for his service to our Historic Zoning Commission. I'd like to reappoint Alan Swayder of the Murfreesboro Fire Department to our Board of Gas Examiners, and I would like to recommend to you to appoint Martin McCullough to our, what was known as the Special Projects, but is our Greenway Projects Committee, and he will be replacing Charlotte Gardner. And I want to thank Ms. Gardner for her dedicated work to our Greenway Projects Committee. And I make those recommendations to you tonight.
Move to adopt the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
All right, is there any other business coming for the council at this time? Mr. Haley?
Mr. Griffith has an item.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and if I may pass these out. Mayor Bragg, what we have is a request for a handicap ramp by Mr. Larry Sims at the property at 109 West College Street, the back entry. This request requires, is a special permit, requires a right-of-way permit that requires consideration by the city council in order to issue it. If you see on the drawing that I passed out, it's basically a concrete ramp, much in keeping with concrete ramps that have been constructed to other elevated entrances. It does meet ADA requirements with a 1 to 12 max slope as a, the handrails, and we think that it will serve the business there as a alternate entrance. Mr. Sims is here if you have any questions for him. If not, I would recommend approval so we can issue him a right-of-way permit to start construction. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Griffith, what kind of material will the handrails be made of?
That's actually something that had quite a bit of discussion. Mr. Sims, you want to address that?
Larry Sims, property owned at 10 Poplar Square and in 109 West College Street. Mr. Whittaker, Gary Whittaker, and I started back in about 2006 on this project, and so he might also be able to answer some of these questions you've got. But basically, it's going to be iron, and there's special details on that fence because of the need to be a certain width between it so nobody could get caught in it, but it'll be a custom-made railing. One of the things I might point out here, this building has some unique features about it. It's 10,000 square feet. We have 3,200 square feet on the main floor. Highway back, we're towards the back of it, we've got 2,600 square feet on a mezzanine, and then the first half of it on the second level, we've got another 4,000 square feet. So this building has 10,000 square feet and has a freight elevator. Unfortunately, the building is 153 feet long. When I was remodeling the building, which I've spent, I'm not going to tell you how much money I've spent, it's just, you don't want to know, but because of the specialty of the building and trying to assemble people and getting people in there, we ran into several problems. One of it is because the building was so long, and the fire marshal didn't like that, anything over 100 feet, we had to go and do some special things. And like, I have 3,000 square feet in the basement with a freight elevator. I had to block off 3,000, two, half of that, because they didn't want me to use it because of the distance from the basement out to get to the front door. So like I said, it's got some unusual features. Back when they were doing the sidewalk, before then, this had been a hair salon. And then we came along and I rented it to George White and Larry Talbert, and then they tied it in with their law office. So it kind of went away, and nobody really thought much about it because they came in out of George's office. Well, later on, when Mr. Talbert moved, they didn't need it anymore. So then it kind of goes back to a possible retail entrance. And the only unfortunate thing about it, we tried to promote it as a retail, and we keep running this dilemma of these steps. You've got to walk up three steps to get to the main level. So we felt like that was a major issue we had to overcome. The other thing, we wanted to upgrade it and modernize the back, which under this design, if you'll look, I think you're going to be pretty impressed with it. Ends up looking like Altmans there on the square where they come back and tore it out, put a nice glass entrance in. We've kind of simulated that same type of front, storefront. So, but the problem is, it's just we need to get people in and out, we need to get furniture in and out. I've got it leased, and this has been an ongoing process. It's just taken a lot of time to do because of one thing or another. I was fortunate, I had a bank that loaned me some money the other day, believe it or not, to let me finish this building out. I've been fortunate enough, I've been paying cash for about seven years, and of course today, most people don't have any extra cash. So I do have the money borrowed, I do have ours construction, they're ready to go to work. I certainly appreciate Joseph's time, he's spent a lot of time on it. Chris Griffith's spent a lot of time on it, Gary Whittaker, we've been on this since 2006, and a lot of it's been my fault, just one delay after another. So anyway, I'd like to bring it to head and hope y'all move forward. I think it'll be a good thing for downtown and be a good thing on the backside of it and make a nice entrance. So if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any other questions for Mr. Sims? Are you ready for a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there any other business to come before the council? If not, Mr. Lyons, again, we congratulate you. We are very proud of your acceptance of this position. We're going to hold that against you, and we thank you very much, and to your family, I'm sorry, but you are adjourned.
May I say something? I meant to say this.
We're adjourned.
You might want to hear this, though. One of the statements, Mr. Lyons, I wholly recommended him for the job. I'm just, it's scary to talk, come to your senses and let him come in. But in the interview, when they had him on the radio, he says, "We're going to cut through the red tape to help these people out to get things built back." And that's so true, the red tape can get to be awesome. But when he told me that, he won my vote right then, because I know they're going to do, help people.
All right, thank you.